Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of June 23, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have my colleagues, Counselor Chrisley, Counselor Butler, and Counselor Kearney today. Counselor Chimes is unable to join us, so there will be one, two, three, four, five of us here today. Public participation. Everyone got a letter that's included in their packet. Everyone read the letter from Robert Vincent. Okay, anyone, Sheri, I can't see you. Anyone online for public participation?
Right, my camera is on. I don't know why you can't see me.
Now we see you on the big screen.
Oh, perfect.
There we go.
No, nobody for public participation.
Okay, then Representative Donald Wong is in here. Yeah, would you come up? Could you sit there? That way they can get you on camera. So I actually asked the delegation if they could come today. Today is Steve's last meeting with us after 17 years. And so the delegation who he's worked with for many years wanted to come and say something.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. And representing the state delegation, I brought two citations, one from the Senate and one from the House. And if you don't mind, I'll read the Senate first and then the House. Conworth, Massachusetts, State Senate, official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby congratulate Steve P. Mayo in recognition of the happy occasion of your retirement. After 17 years of outstanding service with Wakefield as town administrator. And it's signed by the President of the Senate, Karens Vilka, Clerk of the Senate, Michael D. Hurley, State Senator Jason M. Lewis, June 23, 2025. And now I have one from the House also. The Conworth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Steve Mayo. In recognition of your retirement from the town of Wakefield, having served 17 years as a town administrator, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hopeful future good fortune and continued success in our endurance. Given the 23rd day of June 2025 at the House, signed by, sorry, signed by Speaker of the House Ron Mariano, State Rep. Kate Garabedian, and myself, Donald H. Wong.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure, pleasure working with you and your colleagues over these years. And I'll leave you with this. Just move up chapter 70. Now I'll just be writing in from the sidelines on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Representative. Okay, no one else online, nobody else in the audience for public participation. So we will open our public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 water and sewer rates. And because it's a public meeting, can I have a motion?
Motion is made to open the 2026 public hearing to set water and sewer rates.
Second grade, all in favor? Roll call vote? No, okay. Yay, all in favor. Thank you. Almost had it. Hi, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for having us. Here we are again. For those who may not know me, Joe Conway, I'm the Public Works Director. This is Ann Waite, our business manager. And potentially joining us will be Matt Abrahams from the Abrahams Group. Matt, to us, does a lot of things that are a little bit a mix of what Mr. Sherman does at town meeting than the auditors do for Mr. Gill. He himself had a couple of different things going on, so he said he was going to try to make it, but I'll drive from this point for the sake of time. Just a little context, kind of how do we get to this point here? So this whole process for us really starts in the summer, right after the July 4th holiday. Ann and I will look at revenues and expenditures. The one thing you'll hear us say, we're kind of a broken record, we talk about trash every day. We talk about revenue and expenses every day, too. This is the two things that go on no matter what. So we start looking at that, we compare the billing data that's coming in over the summer months. And then what Ann typically will do is she'll track that against historic performance so we can have some sort of an idea where we're measuring up compared to what expectations might be. From that point, things will start to get more in depth around the fall, just before the budget season. We'll look at some of the benchmarks we use to project and forecast some of the things that we'll talk about tonight. A few of those things that we tend to look at annually, a collection percentage. So what is the percentage of what we build that we actually collect? What overall consumption is? So what's the big picture in Wakefield? Is our consumption across the board going up, going down? How's the weather impacting that, et cetera? And then what is the status of anything that may be unpaid and out to lean? So we'll look at those three. We put together a pretty comprehensive data set for the Advisory Board of Public Works. We'll submit that to them, and then from that point, we take a series of meetings with them, good discussion back and forth to come up with a plan and then ultimately a recommendation that gets sent out to the Town Council that you received in your packet. So with all of that, I'll jump right in. One of the things you'll see that we'll talk about here, we talk about water and then we'll talk about sewer independently of each other, some of the things that are going on with both of the enterprises. But what the real focus is, especially at the Advisory Board's level, is bringing it all together and seeing what any action that happens here means as far as like a billing impact. So you know, there's situations where, you'll see tonight where water is not in a bad place, but it's not in as advantageous of a place as sewer. And then what the Advisory Board hones in on is the focus of those two combined, what does that picture create? And we'll get to that towards the end of this presentation. So in front of you, what you can see, just a quick snapshot of some of the last seven years or so leading up to today. Really, it's just a summary of some of the increases that have happened, some of the rate action we've been doing. On the left-hand side, you'll see a charted off graph, what our revenues and expenditures are doing in comparison to each other. You'll notice in water tonight that revenues are not quite caught up with expenditures right now. One of the things we focused on pretty much at length for a good amount of the discussion we had is what would be needed to bridge that gap and get those parallel? What we came up with was we'd need about, there's a 16% gap in between there. We're not recommending that tonight, the Advisory Board is not recommending to that or anything like that, but it's one of the things that we're looking at. On the right-hand side of this graph, you'll see retained earnings. Basically what this is, this is our version of free cash. So anything that is surplus above and beyond what's expended during the year essentially goes into a bankroll for the enterprises independently. With these graphs in both water and sewer, you'll notice a large drive up right around the 21, 22 period. That's the COVID effect happening here. So 7,000 out of the 8,000 and change accounts that are in Wakefield are largely residential family. You know, your two-bedroom Cape or you know, your typical ranch-style home commercial is very limited. And during that time when all those folks were working from home and basically, you know, sheltering in place, for lack of a better term, they were doing more at home, using war, and it drove revenues the way that it did. Since that happened, we've been starting to wean down from that because obviously that was at a level that we thought was higher than, you know, what was necessary or appropriate. And then the ultimate goal for us is to certify somewhere no lower than 8% and right now no higher than 12%. So we're in that range. Now that's our target. So some more on water, just some projections that we have for you, 26 to 30. So this year's budget, it's up 5.6% over 2025. This is only operational, this does not include capital. Generally, capital is either funded, a preference would be to fund that from retained earnings. But occasionally, you know, a project like the tank project that we did a few years ago, you're going to have to go out to borrow for that. One of the biggest drivers of both water and sewer that we'll talk about, we talk about all the time, is the MWRA assessments. This is, probably represents the largest expense in water and sewer along with some fixed administrative costs like insurances and things like that. So in 2026, or for 2026, our assessment is up $391,000 over the 2025. And the real reason for this is during the period which this gets calculated and assessed to the town, we still had our tank construction going on, which meant that our ability to leverage Crystal Lake to offset some of the peak demand that you see in the summer was diminished. One of the things that happens is it's a balancing of the scales that happens in that. And without that tank, there's no protection for surges and pressure and different things like that. So we have to be very careful about only putting out what is getting consumed because if we over-pressurize it, you literally start seeing things like hydrants and things leak and we create ourselves a pretty bad day. We lost that for about eight months while that project was going on. It's tough to have to come here and talk about that, but at the same time, it's literally once in a century that that project gets done. It just happens to be that our time was up this year. Total expenses in the waterside, so including debt and capital. Our projection is that there increase about 4% over the year for the next three years, one of which we have a large water main project that's going to be going out and getting done soon where the debt for the borrowing to that will hit fully in 2027. A little bit more into the future, so future capital outlay, think vehicles, pumps, building maintenance because these two enterprises are self-funding. We have $307,000 for '26, and then we're projecting somewhere around $400,000 in '27 with a plan to hopefully build that up over the year so we can continue to do capital and avoid some of the borrowing. So the baseline, we show this every year, we showed it every year since Ann and I have been presenting this year since COVID. We feel it's important to show it, it's basically do nothing. So what if we took no steps towards the future and didn't do anything? As you can see, the out-years after 2025 tend to add into deficit and then just, you know, perpetuate on top of that and increase and increase from there. Tonight, we're only talking fiscal '26, but we always keep in mind of what the out-years are and consider that to make sure that we're not taking something in the short term that creates something overly volatile down the road as well. So when the Advisory Board got together, this is their recommendation that was included in the packet for the Town Council for this year. What this is, is two pieces to this. So there's a volumetric rate that they're recommending increase by 9%, and that is essentially what flows through the meter. The other thing that they're recommending here is a service charge increase of 10%. The service charge, like I kind of hinted to before, in 2020, 2021, when we put this together, was designed to capture some of the fixed administrative costs that the enterprises will pay, whether or not we flow one gallon of water or not. Think insurance, think mailings, some of the billing functions, things like that. As we were in the middle of that, COVID happened and we scaled that to only a 65% recovery. The Board's approach at that time was to try to be as sensitive as they could, you know, to the new state of the world and unknowing what was going to happen. Over the last two years, we found that '24 and '25 were some of the lowest periods of consumption we've seen in the last 14 years. Lower consumption means lower flow, lower flows lead to lower revenue in the financials following suit. So the mindset of the Board was to take last year and this year and increase those service charges to lean off a little bit of some of the volumetric flow and rate development that comes with that. And again, so this would, is basically set up. So you have a targeted retained earned balance somewhere between 8 and 12% of expenses. You could see fiscal 2025, we're expecting retained earnings to be a little bit north of $1 million, around 13% of our operating budget. And then 2026, we'll need to use a little bit of that to balance off, and we're projecting that our retained earnings balance will come in just shy of 7%. So on the sewer end, a little bit different picture here. As you can see, much is in kind with the water slide, some of the rate action that the Advisory Board has recommended and this Board has taken through the years. The retained earnings graph on the right-hand side looks strikingly familiar to what you just saw. The big change on this slide here is when you plot out revenues and expenditures, they're actually almost about at pace with each other. One of the biggest reasons for this is largely from capital. We have been very fortunate to take advantage of some grant loan funding for capital in the enterprises where the MWRA actually picks up 75% of the bill. So that line in our budget is very low compared to the waterside, which is 100% funded. Similar to before, fiscal '26, the budget that was passed at town meeting is up roughly 169,001.8% over 2025. Our MWRA assessment is down $39,000 over FY '25. It's important to note, when we say that and bring that up at this meeting, when we say that's down, we're comparing the preliminary assessment that we had when the budget went to town meeting or voted on the previous year to the current year. So what ends up happening is their Executive Board convenes sometime mid-June, end of June, votes again, and then they actually can lower that, they can raise that, they could take no action. During COVID, we saw them lower it quite a bit to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. I personally have not seen them raise it, but it's totally within their purview to do that, and so on and so forth. Pre-COVID, we were seeing increases in this assessment somewhere between 3.5% and 5%. Post-COVID, a couple of things that we were doing and a couple of changes on the authorities' end. The assessment has actually become more favorable, and as we project outward, we carry a 3% increase, just as we expect that's what it would be, what it normalizes. Total expenses, including capital and projected debt, increased a little bit higher here at 5.1% as a projection from '27 to '30. Most of that is going to be related to capital that comes online. So we have two more rounds of MWRA funding, like I mentioned before. We have Phase 14, where we can take out a full $1.2 million loan for 0% interest. The only caveat to that is it has to be paid back within 10 years. So that'll add $128,000 to our budget line to be able to do that. Capital and articles, again, typically our preferences to fund those out of what we have in reserves and not have to borrow for them. This year, $358,000. Next year, we see a little bit of an increase to $550,000. And then again, our plan would be to see if we can increase that, to keep funding that consistently. Baseline for sewer, much like water, as you can see, sewer is in a little bit better of a position for '25 and '26. And then as we get on further out the out-years, we notice that the graphs start to fall off and we end up becoming into a deficit there. The recommended option that was proposed by the Advisory Board here on the volumetric side is a 1% rate increase with a service charge increase of 10%, which is in kind with water. The targeted reserves balances are all the same here, they're in kind across the board. And then we project 2026 to have a surplus of approximately $493,000 or 15% of the operating budget. Two things that came up when this was getting discussed. We hit, or we project to hit 15%, which is a number that S&amp;P has been insufferably drilling into our heads as a best practice for AAA communities for reserve levels. The other thing, the Advisory Board, once the year's certified out and we know the complete picture of what the financial performance for the year is, is going to take up the topic of the irrigation moratorium that we've reviewed in front of this Board multiple times. To do that every year annually, there's always a line in the packet that the Council gets that says the recommendation would be to raise the sewer reserve because should there be a move to change the moratorium and reverse that, there would be some revenue balancing that would need to happen, which would likely need reserves to make that happen. So with all that said, when you take the two enterprises and you combine those together, the 9% that we talked about in water, the sewer rate at 1, and then the service charges, down in the bottom right-hand corner of this graph, this is actually a credit to the Advisory Board. They said that this would be beneficial to them to see, and they like to look at it this way because it gives them a holistic picture. So there's some estimated usages in sample quarterly bills. And when you compare the current bill for the 1,000 cubic foot user versus what is proposed for '26, you see a difference net across the board anywhere between 5.3% and 4.5%. Sewer flat is a little interesting, so we do have some homes out there that are on wells that are not metered. And what this is, is simply an average sewer consumption based off of some industry standards that would get assessed to the 60 or so accounts. So that's included at the bottom, that's why that's skewed a little bit from that. Outside of this, not in the presentation, but in your packet, we had a couple of other voting items. I think Ann was going to go through really quick.
Yep, so the manual read fee for meter fees, so if someone requests the manual read, we would like that to remain at the $50 that it currently is now. Number four is the septic disposal formula. So what that is, is if someone has septic that they want to dump, we actually have a place they can do it on Foundry Street. Since I've been here, I haven't seen it happen yet, but I'm waiting for that day. That's at $110.00. That has not, we are not asking that to change. The only thing we are asking for increases, the final read fee, we'd like to go to 50, from $50 to $100. So it's people who are selling their house in Wakefield, it's their final bill. It takes, it's more effort than you would imagine, but first, we have to get information from either the real estate agent or the homeowner. We need email addresses because people now request that. We send, on a scheduled day, we send someone to the home to get the actual read, they send it back. We make sure the final bill looks correct, everything's on there, and then it's either emailed or someone comes and picks it up, usually they come pick it up in addition to the email, and then it's paid. So we feel that the two or so hours is justified of the $100.
And with that, that's all we have for our presentation, so I defer to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any Advisory Board members on the Zoom, Sheri?
No, there's no Advisory Board members, but we do have Matthew Abrahams on. He's from the Abrahams Group.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Hi.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, Matt Abrahams from the Abrahams Group. I'm just here in case there are any questions or comments I can help with.
Great, thank you for joining us. Okay, I'll open it up to my colleagues. Any questions?
Joe, could you kind of clarify the 10% service charge in relationship to the actual billing?
Sure. So I can't take, this administration can't take credit for that implementation, but when that was put in, it was designed to cover some of the expenses whether we sell or distribute one drop of water or not, that will be an expense to us. Insurance is a big one. You know, some of the things that we offset, you know, throughout town government and things like that, just by existing, is covered in that, for your accountants, all the Schedule VII stuff, mailings and things like that. So it's important to us, and you know, sometimes we explain the mailing thing to folks and they give us a little bit of a funny look, but whether or not you have any consumption or not, we want to read your meter, send you a bill, even if it says zero, because part of that is for your own, you know, awareness, but then for us, too, we utilize that to find where our water is going and how is it being consumed. So at the end of the year, we need to take all that and we figure out into what is called unaccounted-for water. And generally, what that ends up being is things that are used in fire protection or hydrant flushing and things like that. But billing process, if no water came through those pipes, we're still going to have to do that. So it's things like that, you know, no matter what.
So it's 10% of what?
Oh, sorry about that.
The rate?
Yes, yes. So the existing service charges is in the summary slide, but it would be increased from last year to this year by 10%, so.
Is that going from $18 to $19.80?
Well, for water, it's $21.08 currently now, and it will go to $23.19 for a 5A meter. Most residential homes has a 5A meter for water.
Sorry. So just in regard to sewer, so if you look at the top right-hand side here, I'm sorry, I could have clarified that better in the presentation. Currently, it all goes by meter size, and what this is, is an industry, basically it's an industry standard, the equivalent meter methodology. So right now, for a home or a dwelling, I should say, with a 5A meter connection, the service charge is $23.54. If voted on favorably here tonight, that would move to $25.89. If voted on favorably here tonight, that would move to $2589. And then there'd be the same thing, sorry about that, in the water side. So currently, $2108, that would move to $2319. That was $18 when, so that was in place for a while, then it was removed, for whatever reason, before my time, then came back at 18. And now presently, it's at $2108 on water, with the potential to move up 10% from that.
And that's quarterly, right?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Constance.
Hello, good evening. We got a public question that came in about the, I think you referenced it, Joe, the, there was a slightly different, more favorable assessment from the MWRA to the tune of $30-ish thousand that came in a few days ago. Is that, and this might be a question too for Mr. Abraham, do you feel that you need to consider that, or have you already considered it, and it doesn't really move the numbers in the presentation?
So as far as the presentation, candidly, it's probably not going to move the needle. One of our members of the advisory board is actually in tune very good with the MWRA's finance. She actually serves on, in a financial role there, as part of the advisory board function. If there was any indication that there would be something to the scale that we'd be able to, you know, lower or impact anything where it could see direct savings to our customers out there, we would absolutely do that. Unfortunately, you know, $29,000 probably won't accomplish that. I mean, we certainly probably could. One of the things you don't know is, you know, we have our timeline to hit this meeting. The MWRA has their time. Sometimes they sync up, sometimes they don't. You know, if we had a meeting on June 30th of this year, which I think is next Monday, that probably could have been, you know, something that we waited on even more. It comes as a balance and act between all the schedules. But anytime, I mean, look at the way, not to go off topic, but trash this year, or if you take off, you know, the impact that the MWRA has on these two enterprises, this is built on must-haves. There's no nice-to-haves, there is no we-want-to-haves. So our three-year average in sewer is less than 2%, and water is less than 3%. Again, excluding the influence that the MWRA has on it. I think in '26, it was 0.5% that they were actually looking for. And really, all that is, is taking care of your people, making sure that the lights can go on, and making sure that the pumps can run. And then outside of that, we try to be as bare bones as possible.
Counselor Chrisley, sorry, that took a moment. My brain was going through all the Jaws and then all the Cs.
Call JFCS.
Thank you, Anne, thank you for the informative presentation. Just for kind of my own education, on the water side, I just want to kind of understand the scope of the tank construction. Is that the, can you explain a little more the purpose of that and what the cost was?
Absolutely. So a few years back at town meeting, we got authorization to borrow $5 million to replace our approximately 700,000 gallon water tank on the top of Sydney Street and Upland Road, which is in Harts Hill behind JJ.
Okay.
Essentially, what that does is it functions for us in water distribution very similar to what like the expansion tank or your home heating system might. You know, high volumes of fire flow, so like when the church fire happened that time, and every hydrant in downtown is basically open and sending water to that. That's, you know, surge capacity there. Anytime where, you know, there's any pressure fluctuations and things like that, that tank will rise and lower. And it takes basically the effect of all those systematic changes into that tank, not out into the street.
Okay. So that's basically your holding reservoir?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there are, you know, a lot of communities that that would be the holding reservoir, you know, all night long. For us, more, it's different fluctuations. So first thing in the morning, you know, everybody's up, breakfast, showers, all that. You know, we're using more water between 5:00 and 7:00. Sometimes it takes a little bit for the, you know, pumps at the MWRA and our treatment plant to catch up to that. That allows us to overuse what we're actually pumping into the system.
Okay. So when was the tank, what was it originally built? I'm assuming this was a full replacement for this?
1927.
Wow.
Okay, so it was long overdue.
You know what, though? It served its purpose very well. The bang for the buck there was fantastic.
We got our ROI on that one.
I hope the second one that's up there now goes just as long.
Okay. And then my second question is, you mentioned on another part of the slide here, an additional water main project with borrowing of $5 million. That's an upcoming capital expense for the system, am I right about that?
Yes, so we have the authorization to borrow. The bid should be hitting the street anytime now. And then that will be linear feet of pipe on the road.
Okay. And I think you touched on it also, is that partially underwritten by MWRA grant funds? Or did I mishear that?
No, so that is not. I wish it was. On the sewer end, we can do a lot of sewer, think of your main lines in the road. We can do a lot of that without needing to excavate. And the most fantastic part is you get a million dollars worth of rehab project for $250,000 price tag. So every time I get a survey, I always fill it out that they should do it in water too. I haven't really broken through on that yet, but I'm trying.
Okay. So the source of that borrowing is what again?
That would be, that's a conventional borrowing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, and I think, I think I always struggled a little with this at the, you know, in my previous role and maybe even last year. So help me understand the baseline water slide, and is that essentially? Because it has like, it has a bunch of hypotheticals that are seemingly very scary. We're going to end up with negative $8 million in return retained earnings, but it's, A, I don't think it's, I'm just not sure why that slide there, and why the growth in the deficit from '25 to '26 is like $780,000, and then magically it shrinks down to like 370 and sort of stays in that $300,000 to $500,000 level after that. But why is there this huge jump in what we would have as projected surplus or deficit?
Yeah, so, but basically, this, this slide references for us, more than anything, is really that, you know, we can't do nothing as much as we'd like to. I think that would be our preference. And basically, what this is really showing is what you have in reserve capacity, how long it would last should you decide to, you know, not take any action one way or the other.
Why are our costs going up by seven, our costs are going up by $700,000 this year? Our overall expenses in the water side are going up by $700,000? Because again, you're saying that you're keeping this stable. The surplus this year's negative $309,000, it's negative 1.1 million. That tells me that, you know, we're roughly $800,000 actually.
One of the things that this also.
In increased expenses.
Yep. One of the things that this also doesn't represent, so that projected retained earnings number right there for fiscal '25. So the tank project is wrapping up, we have some other capital things, and you know, infrastructure projects that we've been doing that are done, and we'll close them out, and we're going to have a surplus of savings that's going to influence '25 in the shorthand and bump that up. It talked about the gap between revenues and expenditures in the very beginning. So '26 and out takes kind of that one-time turnback of all those things that are coming to a head. Accounts in '25, and then, you know, we won't have that luxury in '26 or beyond as we're forecasting now. Again, that, you know, anything really outside of '26 is subject to change. This is a snapshot in time of what, you know, the financial pictures look like.
I guess I'm still, I'm still struggling with why is that? And again, I think we should probably kill this slide in general, but why do we have, if you're saying that we're keeping revenues flat and baselining them, why are expenses growing by $800,000 on the water side? But it doesn't, because it doesn't seem like in your previous stuff, you're saying there's revenue, there's expense growth of $800,000.
Sure, so I mean, so there's revenue, not revenue, there's expense change every year, depending on, you know, some of the impacts that happen to the budget. You know, whether it's collective bargaining agreements for our staff, you know, insurance, different commodities and supplies that we need to buy. And then also, you know, we're acknowledging that in '27 and beyond, our goal would be that capital is funded out of retained earnings and expenses not, we're going to try to avoid borrowing, I think, because at least on this side of the fence for this. Knowing that we have to pay interest on something is something we try to avoid, to avoid the long-term expenses with it. But I think Matt.
Joe, you might speak up on that as well?
Oh, you read my mind, I was just going to tag you in.
Okay, thank you. This is Matt Abraham's, the Abraham's group. I have a comment or two related to that that may help. So the FY '25 projections include revenue projections based on what has already hap, what has happened so far, because we're talking about the current fiscal year when we're talking about FY '25. So we know what has happened from a billing standpoint. We've taken the time to project some of the non-user charge of revenue because there are other revenue areas other than just what's billed through the regular bills. So we've done, spent time projecting FY '25. We've also projected FY '26, but we don't know what FY '26 is going to bring. So when you do that, you've got to think about maybe being a little bit more conservative with your projections because you don't necessarily know what the weather patterns are going to be. You wouldn't necessarily want to assume a really dry year with heavy watering and therefore heavy revenues, because what if that doesn't happen? You'll have a revenue shortfall. So there are different projections from a revenue standpoint in the '25 column and the '26 column for that reason. And then when we say no revenue changes, we're talking about '26 through '30. So again, '25 is what we projected based on what we know. '26 through '30 is using what I would call the more conservative projections for the reasons I already outlined. And then on top of that, I think Joe may have mentioned this or alluded to this as well, in FY '25, there was, retained earnings is being used as a funding source for capital. So that is included in that surplus and deficit calculation, whereas it is not being included in the '26 number. Because Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe retained earnings are not, at least at this point, being used to cover capital for FY '26.
Correct.
Right, so that is also a reason why the numbers appear the way that they do. In other words, if retained earnings was being used as a funding source for '26, those two numbers that are being compared would be closer.
And I mean, who are you presenting these numbers to? Is this to the advisory board? Is this where this mainly gets? And again, this is speaking, speaking mainly to your consultants. I just feel like this, so what you just told me is it's that the '26 through '30s are stabilized, but the '26 has, is more conservative on the revenue front, so it probably has less revenues than '25. I just feel like this, this, a slide like this is done as a scare tactic to like spook people into action. And that's why I find it, I find this slide pretty disingenuous, is really what I find. I find, and this is a knock on you, Joe, this is feeling like this is not, this is not a true reflection of what a baseline would be. This is, you're projecting a baseline and then you're flattening it out. And that's just, that's not a good way of financial modeling. So I just, I don't, I don't know what to say about like the baseline and then your recommendation, where you're trying, and, and again, have we, I know that it's best case. How routinely have we funded things not using debt service, using just retained earnings?
In the water and sewer side?
Yeah.
We portion of that every year.
No, 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 I know, but they're trying, they want to do it all.
Well, I mean, that would be the goal. I mean, obviously, the $5 million tank project, clearly, you're not going to be able to do that out of retained earnings consistently, but.
But you're not going to be able to, well, it remains, again, my thing is around, it's around putting in the billing. The issue is, is that you're increasing the bills to a large degree to build in your retained earning, the ability to fund the projects, fund the capital expenditures out of retained earnings, but we don't do that?
We do that anyway.
Well, we do, we do it some, but we don't, we're not doing it fully. And so my thing is, is like, why don't we be, like, if we're, like, it's more about budgeting, not budgeting honestly, but budgeting in a way that isn't wishful thinking. So that, sure, or we're budgeting. My problem is, is we budget these increases in the rates, and then we issue water bonds anyway because the expenses grow in other areas, that then we spend the money there. So that's my fear, is that you budget in rate increases to fund projects out of retained earnings, and then you use bonds to fund those projects anyway in four or five years. So that's, that's where I get concerned about this. And frankly, we're probably a little concerned about the, the level of rate increases that they have going up. By the way, on the hard dollar side, yeah, you should probably just go to, I mean, I know you can't do it water and sewer, but yeah, $50 combined. And that's just what it costs for your bill every quarter, plus, plus your water rate. Like versus like doing the 1% or 2% or 10% or whatever. Just get it to a hard number, leave there for a bit, and then move it on. It's like the, it's like the pit pass.
Can I ask you two questions?
Sure.
One, you said that the consumption has been the lowest in the last two years of the last 14 years?
Yes.
Can you explain that to me? Because with all the new apartments going in, that just doesn't compute to me.
You would think that.
Yeah.
When you look at the end of the year and look at the total amount of consumption that's come into town, generally, we average somewhere around 82.5 million cubic feet, give or take. '24, we were at 79. '25, we're at 80. Some of those high years that I talked about, when everybody was driven home through COVID, '86, '82, '85, '87, '88, lowest year was 78 million. So that is what goes through, comes into town and is used. The two biggest impacts to that, the last two years, the spring, so your time from April to July 1st, is basically the consumption that sets up the July 1st bill has been soaking wet. Everybody's tendency is to be inside, you know, we're a little bit more docile as far as, you know, we're not out doing activities and things like that. Our tendencies haven't changed. So those two quarters right there have really dipped the consumption end. Last year, and then, you know, if this week continues, second quarter ends up, you know, being a little bit elevated when you balance it out after the fact because of the impact that the spring season had on the first bill, it ends up dropping your net across the board.
Okay.
Sorry, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces to it.
Yeah, so, so I mean, I think a lot of it is, is the watering of the lawns, right? So I'm thinking internal, but it's also, that plays an effect, it sounds like.
Yeah, that, anything, you know, lawns, anything that you're doing, I mean, you're up, you're out, you know, more hours of the day, taking advantage of the sunlight. Your tendencies change. Depending on who you're reading and what you're reading about, they say that your average consumption tends to increase 30% when the weather is more favorable than versus when it's not. So.
Good to know, I knew that. And then second, the agreement that we have with Market Street, is that up for renewal sometime soon?
I don't know that, if there's a date off the top of my head where it sunsets. There are a bunch of provisions in it where we have the ability to go in there and monitor that and, you know, make sure that the agreement that was put in place is still favorable for us. One thing I can say is some of the reason why sewer ends up probably being a little bit different in picture than water is because, you know, we benefit from a revenue standpoint for that. So that is, reads are done through the water meters over there, and then the sewer charges applied to it.
Yeah.
If there is a date for it to be renegotiated, we're more than willing to get into that.
I thought we had a time limit, it wasn't forever.
I don't remember a time limit offhand, but we have renegotiated when the flow has increased.
Yes, I remember we did it once. Can you just check on that?
Yeah, please.
I don't, I don't know, if only we knew the attorney in Linfield.
No, there is some of that, and then some of our different intermunicipal agreements may have caveats where you re, you know, every X amount of years, you go back and relook at that.
It just would be good to look at, I think.
Absolutely.
We haven't looked at it in a couple of years, but just, you know, as the new restaurants go up there, I think, just to make sure that it's still to our advantage.
Yeah, I heard today that a restaurant is going out and a retail store is going in, which is, which is a real change up there.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, I think I just.
Wall Murders is going out, I guess.
But I think Kava's moving in there.
It was the clothing store.
Okay.
Yeah. That was a scuttlebutt around the office. Another place I would never go in. Another place I would never go in. Go ahead, you'll go.
I wouldn't ever, I wouldn't go either.
Wallburgers, why wouldn't you go there?
Counselor Butler.
Sure.
And then the, the average user. Is the average user really 2,000 or is it, like, I guess that's, that's my bigger question because again, this came up when we, when we started with the tiers. And then I remember the tier differential was much greater at a certain point. And I think that's, the compression there is, is certainly.
Yeah, so that, that average user, that is really just a snapshot of, you know, potential. I mean, you could, is almost infinite possibilities of what you could show there. What I can say is we find that our, what I'll call your average user doesn't get above tier two.
Okay, so it's, it's hard to get above 25, well, it's not hard.
No, it's not hard at all. I mean, realistically, but with the way that the billings, the data that the billings show us, like when we found out that Mass General Law required the town to have a rate system that is tiered, tier-based, you know, we took a hard look at that and it was shocking, at least to me, to find out that, you know, over 45% of the bills didn't elevate past tier two.
How, I mean, how many are in tier one? It just seems like it would be darn near impossible to be in tier one.
I'd say your probability for hitting that are going to be in the two winter bills more than anything. I believe, I don't have the number in front of me.
I'm a family of five, so I'm not.
Yeah, I would, I would never be there myself. But I would think, you know, probably somewhere between like 18, 22%, I bet you.
Okay.
Hey, we could get all that data too if you want to see it.
Counselor Carney?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the water rate option, including service charges as shown in the presentation.
I think we have to do vote by vote, correct?
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second.
You can do them all at once. Has there been an open discussion on this yet?
No, there ha-
I think you did ask and no one was.
I did ask, I'll ask again, anyone, I didn't. Anyone for public comment on the presentation? Sharon, anyone online?
No, no comments online.
Okay. So you have a motion to move.
Kevin, you could do these all in one if you wanted. John, show motion.
Yeah, so the recommendations, you make a motion to approve the recommendations?
Yeah, as presented in the package.
As presented in the package?
Oh, oh, points included in the recommendation. Sure, I move that we.
I found this on the web.
There it is.
Are you going to make a motion? I'm happy to do it.
I move that we approve the recommendations afforded to us by the advisory board of the courts on all, all, all these factors.
My second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye. That's unanimous, thank you so much. Thank you, Ann and Joe. I think just a little asterisk for whoever does the slide next to her. I think the do nothing slide may be not needed in the future.
I think what I'll end up doing is probably reach out to Councilor Butler and if there's anything.
I, I actually hadn't seen that title. I think we don't need to do nothing.
No, that's good constructive feedback, so is there another, because, you know, we're pigeonholed into looking at it the way we look at it all the time. So if there's a more relatable way to get that out, we obviously want to.
Always improving, thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, can I take 30 seconds more of your time?
Please do.
So I, I would be remiss if.
Should I close the public hearing? Sorry, and then.
So move you.
Second. Great, all in favor? Aye, okay, yes.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't take the last town council meeting that Ann and I were here with Steve and didn't offer a thank you for all the support. I know we're sitting here in front of you today, but there are 80 people that work for us that appreciate everything you've done for them. And, you know, all of them are wishing you and Jean, the boys and all the grandkids a very long and happy retirement.
Thank you.
So we look forward to seeing you out there having some fun.
Thank you, thank you. Guys, great to work with you, no?
Absolutely, thank you.
I think you have direct numbers if you ever need anything.
Well, we'll find out.
We may, we may need somebody someday to, you know, check those pit passes when, you know, Steve needs something to do, so.
Keep them in mind, have your short list.
Thank you so much and thanks for coming in. Okay, moving on, item 5B, Housing Production Plan. And I think we're joined by Planning Board member Theo Knoll. And is there somebody online as well?
I think so.
Hi Theo, thank you for waiting.
Sure, of course. Yeah, I think Jen Goldson from.
Yeah, she's coming right over.
Oh, good, okay. Just to begin, how, would you like me to give the, sort of the planning board's sort of summary? Or how to, how would you like me to play with, with Jen?
If you want to do a summary, that would be great.
Sure, okay, great stuff, all right.
We all have a draft of the production plan.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. So, good evening, I'm Theo Knoll, both a member of the Planning Board and the Planning Board's representative to the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee. It's really been a valuable engagement of the town to review and work with our consultant to prepare this plan for your consideration. Just a couple of things to note at the beginning. I want to thank our former senior planner Samantha Elliott for helping us shepherd this process and do want to echo everyone's gratitude and thanks to Stephen Mayo, our town administrator, for your efforts with this and all the planning efforts over the years. And a special thank you to former town councillor Bob Vincent for making this a priority. And also a big thank you to the members of the advisory panel, including current councillors Butler and Chines. And the last point of introduction to make is that this was and is a public process with every effort made for town participation and engagement. And again, this is an ongoing process, it's a learning process and it's something, I think this helps keep a lot of conversation and learning for the planning board and for the town. And I think that's, that's a real asset for this plan in particular. The Planning Board voted at our last meeting to recommend adoption of the Housing Production Plan as presented to you tonight. And just a couple of other comments. This is both a critical and required strategic planning document for the town. It fills a gap that we have, having let the former plan lapse. It's a minimum requirement to continue to comply with our 40B requirements. And had we been doing so, it really gives us just another tool in the toolkit to continue to be thoughtful and manage our town's development and growth. But in addition to that, it really builds on all of the planning efforts that we've been engaged with over the last several years. I'm talking about Vision 2030, the master plan process that's still in play, but also a lot of the considerations that we've gone through on the Planning Board with town council and a town meeting regarding the MBTA communities and the ADU zoning changes. All of that discussion has been thoughtful and this plan really is complimentary and contributes to, and I think goes another step forward in our learning and understanding, I think, the realm of our needs and the tools that could be available to us as, as we go forward. So both the advisory committee and the Planning Board recommend this highly. Just one other summary comment. The plan itself includes both a needs assessment that really builds off of the prior needs assessments we've done, but it also reviews our strengths, capacities and constraints within the town, which is a very useful benchmarking and, and framing. But then it also suggests goals that, that we should consider and a number of really practical tools. And it puts them into a matrix and I really want Jen to be able to, to walk you through as, as you need because I think that's a really useful planning document to really help us sort of be prepared. And again, it lays out tools that we get to consider as a community for how we move forward. So it's not a, it's not making hard binding recommendations, but it really is a thoughtful presentation about what, what kinds of things we can be doing. And it, I think, helps set the stage for future work. And lastly, two other key takeaways. It's a net 988 housing units that we need to respond to demographic changes, affordability concerns. And this is a part of that overall target that we've been talking to when you talk about MBTA communities. And so that, that's a really thoughtful approach to thinking through what development we need. And that is very responsive to, I think, a lot of the community concerns around senior housing and the need for more family housing. And those two things are very much linked in terms of a, a housing supply. And would, thinking more about senior housing helps keep more of our community members here. And so lastly, I really think that ultimately, I just want to wrap up by saying the real conclusion is that we continue to need a balanced approach to housing development and preservation focusing on affordability, availability and accessibility. And this plan itself serves as that good roadmap, that good next steps for us. And I think we're looking forward to using this as a learning tool and the ability for the town and the town council and to really be able to consider future tools and next steps in a way that, that meets Wakefield's needs. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions and I think maybe throw it over to Jen, Jennifer, for your, any other comments.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to jump in. Is it okay if I share my screen? I think I have just sent a request.
Perfect.
Yeah, good. And as Theo, that was very well, very well put. Theo, thank you for that really great introduction. It makes my job a little easier as well. And I will show you the, the matrix that Theo, here we go, was talking about. And that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up. So there's a lot of information in the Housing Production Plan that has to do with the needs assessment and the analysis. And that takes up a good portion of the front, you know, front two thirds. But if you flip down to, to chapter seven, that's really where the policy, the policy piece is. And I would say that's the real substantive piece. You've seen a lot of that earlier material based on an earlier presentation that we did. But, but chapter seven is really the, the policy piece that I wanted to just zoom into tonight. And as, as Theo was saying, it's really giving you tools. They're not mandates, but they're really tools. The Housing Production Plan is set up by the state as more of a carrot than a stick. So it's, you know, it, it, you know, helps you think about the next five years. Where do you want to spend time and resources? What tools are available to you? And we try to give you resources along with, with the descriptions, with between case studies and examples and, and where there's other funding opportunities, we try to point those out. And then the last thing I'll say before I get into the, the details of this is that having the Housing Production Plan, as I said, is more of a carrot than a stick. And one of the things it does as an incentive to have one is that it helps you be eligible for more state monies. And it, it puts you kind of in better standing with the state that you have it. The implementation is sort of, you, you take the opportunities that come in the next, in the next five years and try to be as proactive as you can about it. But the, the real, the real benefit is the fact that you will have an approved plan and, and that you can list as one of the others, you know, smart things you've been doing, like your comprehensive plan and the state wants to see that you've been thoughtful and, and have a direction. So, so that's what this plan is all about. And I'm gonna make this a little bit bigger. How's the size? Is this, can people just give me a thumbs up if this is an okay size?
We, we have it in our packet as well, so.
You have it anyway, okay, perfect, perfect. So it's okay if you can't see it too much. So hopefully the folks online can see it better this way. So in chapter seven, we talk first about goals. And, you know, the top goal is really, oops, sorry, all these AI things are coming up about my grammar, okay. So the first thing is maintaining your existing stock above that minimum 10% goal. That's kind of your, your basic core goal. And then we talk about promoting a range of housing options for everyday earners. And we kind of elaborate on each of these goals here, but the ideas that you want, you know, you want a range. And the, and the idea of expanding affordability to help economic, economic, socioeconomic diversity in the community, promoting personal responsibility, helping residents put down roots and ultimately contributing to a thriving community where people can live there, they can work there, et cetera. So that's what number two is all about. Number three is supporting independence, and Theo talked about this a bit, supporting independence and dignity for seniors as well as residents with disabilities. And we grouped those together, not because they always have the same needs, but a lot of the needs can overlap. And so we kind of elaborated what we meant by seniors and residents with disabilities. And then the fourth is really talking more about location. So allowing strategic growth and removing barriers to neighborhood scale housing. So there's two types of, of, you know, I would say, strategies kind of embedded with this that are, that are related to each other. One is looking at being strategic about where new growth is happening, you know, transit, near transit, commercial centers, previously developed sites. And then thinking also about neighborhood scale housing where, you know, larger development may not be what you want there, but looking at that more neighborhood scale to really mimic what's in the existing, in existing neighborhoods, that, that feel. And so we talk about both of those within that goal to try to, it's about balancing those two objectives. And then, and then the fifth one is just, it's really about outreach and engagement. You've, you've done a lot of that, especially through this plan even, but continuing that through the next, you know, the five years of this plan. Housing is just one of the, the, the issues that, that communities grapple with that, that people just don't, aren't as well versed in. And so it's just very, very common when we do these housing production plans that one of the goals tends to be, let's provide more transparency around decisions. Let's provide more engagement so that people can really understand housing needs and solutions, but also have a voice in that. And so that's what this fifth goal is about, that transparency and, and public understanding. And then, and then the sixth is streamlining, you know, you have a lot of different entities that are involved and make the, and make these, you know, it's not going to all be the Planning Board, for example, implementing all of these ideas. And so it's going to take collaboration to really have that impact. And so the sixth goal here is streamline that local collaboration to support that efficient implementation. And we talked about, you know, improving that coordination among town boards, committees and then other partners who may also be work, they may not be, they may not be town entities, but they may be other partners that are, that are working towards these same goals. So, all right. Now, what we did here is we have this matrix, and I like this as like a little cheat sheet. You know, it's good to read the whole thing and read the narratives and the case studies and all the resources we gave you, but, but this is like the, kind of the bottom line. This is the, the cheat sheet list of the strategies here. And we tied it to which goals do we think each strategy might support? So up on top here, we have the six goals in like shorthand, just to, to remember. Like the first one's about the 10%, the subsidized housing industry. The second one's about housing options. And we went through and we, we just put a check mark around, hold on, it's annoying, I think, that I have these little, there we go, that'll be cleaner. And so that's what this matrix is all about. But it's a nice way for you to just kind of glance and see what's there. So we have things like, oh, don't forget to update this in five years. And then, you know, other things, I'm not going to go through every single one because you all have it in front of you, but you could see we have a variety of ideas that talk about policies, regulatory ideas, tax, tax ideas, tax exemptions, and then different kinds of zoning for different kinds of housing types. And I'm just going to kind of go through these pretty quickly and then we can always go back if there are questions. You know, more zoning things, some of these are like very like particular, but can help open up that neighborhood type housing. And then, you know, looking at different programs, monitor the progress of your renter assistance program. And so again, I'm not going to read them all, but they go on and on. And we have, how many do we have here? I believe we have 26 total. And the idea is that you're probably not going to implement all of these. And the idea is that you're probably not going to implement all of these. You know, we put these together thinking this is more of a roadmap than a blueprint, right? So when you plug your, your goal, your destination into Waze or whatever you use, Google Maps, you know, you want to get to someplace, and that's what your goals are. These strategies are like various routes that you can take to get there. And, and probably you won't, you know, if you do implement them all, that's amazing. But, but most communities, you know, implement some. And it really is based on opportunity, it's based on, essentially, it's based on support feasibility, if you get certain grant monies, it's based on are different zoning initiatives ultimately approved, it's based on a lot of things, and it's also based on that collaboration. So, so we have no expectation. I mean, if you really implemented them all, that would be amazing, and I really want to hear about it. But I don't want you to think that the plan is assuming that all 26 by the end of year five will be completely implemented. So these give you a lot of tools, as Theo said, a lot of options, and some of it will just depend on what opportunities arise, other things will be more proactive on, on your end. So I'll pause there, and I'll leave this up for now in case people have specific questions on the strategies, I'm happy to, to talk through any of them.
Great. I do, I just want to say I thank the committee who worked on this. I think it's such a great report. I know there were so many diverse viewpoints that were included. I really appreciate that, Theo, you and Stacy are models for, in the report. You're on page six.
Yeah.
That's great, great photo. And I, I really, I'm really appreciative that we have this report as kind of to supplement the other stuff that we have, to hand off to a new town administrator when they come in and kind of make a five-year plan. I really like that. And I, I'm gonna ask Councilor Butler if he wants to say anything, but also the burden is on you to remind us, whoever's sitting here, within five years that we need to update it. So that's gonna be on you, so we don't fall out of compliance in the next five years.
John and I only have two years left, so, like, you know.
You should just add a tier.
You're bringing my age up again?
No, I mean, are we, I'm, I'm more like, are we, you know, can I run for a five-year term? But no, I think, look, the, the group, I came to this group probably a year into the process. Councilor Vincent, you know, mildly arm-twisted me into joining. And it actually was, it was great that we reached out to the community, we got a lot of different viewpoints, there are definitely a lot of different viewpoints on this. And I, I don't think one could, we are not going to implement all 26, let me just say that, as you see them. But these are all ideas, and it really is, this is a guideline. This is like us setting up, you know, a plan. It is not, these things are not written in tablets that we are adopting. We are doing all 26, or even we're trying, we as a council, we as the planning board, we as, I think, I think these are, there have been any number of great insights. I don't want, what I don't want people to do is to like harp on one particular narrow aspect of this and be like, I hate this, throw the whole thing out. No, that's, that's probably why we didn't put a plan together, and that's why we haven't had one for six or seven years. It's understand that this is a plan, and this is a way for us to realize both our statutory requirements, because that is, you know, that, that first piece of number one was making sure, like, we don't have, you know, again, for all our, for all our Nahant Street folks, like, not having this really hamstrings us, not having a housing production plan hamstrings you around, what is it, unfriendly 40Bs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's one of the things. But that's not it. Like, I mean, I guess that's my other thing to, like, my sort of fellow townspeople. Like, it's like, you know, stopping 40Bs isn't the only reason you do the housing production plan. You do the housing production plan because you want to figure out how we're gonna continue to grow this town and make it livable and make it safe and make it nice and make it the Wakefield we all love, but also understanding that it's probably gonna be, you know, we're projecting to be, what, 30,000 people maybe by 2030? They gotta live somewhere, folks, so let's, let's make it an amenable place to live. All right, that's, that's my soapbox.
Councilor Kearney?
I want to compliment those involved, the planning board, Jennifer Samantha, who is no longer with her, I believe, but I think what this meant in my mind is we have to have a town plan. And that, you know, we, you know, this is the first report that I've gotten, had quality substance to it, that you could read, you could understand it, and some of the other reports that have come out of the Assessing and Planning Commission just weren't there. They just were, they were loose, it was just a whole bunch of garbage put together. So I compliment you, this is a great job, and I agree that we should be looking at this as we get down the road, but we need a town plan, and we need someone to sort of submit this together for the future, because we get, we have to make sure someone's around, someone's around to remember, besides Doug.
Yeah.
Well, and one thing I didn't, I want to hop up on my soapbox for one more moment. You're right, John, we have seen, you know, the number of slideshows we've seen over the past year that have been sloppy and haphazard and put together and wildly unprofessional. JM Goldson did a fantastic job, and I would recommend them sort of highly to any other town who did this. And hopefully that, you know, that was my clip for their commercial. But, but no, congratulations to them and to Theo as well. Like, they, the group worked exceptionally well together, so hats off.
Councilor Chrisley?
I just want to thank Theo and Jen to some of the earlier comments. My reading of it is a very thorough report, it's very well put together, it was actually enjoyable to read. But I wanted to just give you a chance to respond to two of the key findings. It seems like with the demographics in Wakefield, we're sort of getting pinched at both ends. We're having high costs of entry into the market for younger people looking for starter homes, and we're gonna get it pinched at the, the opposite end of the spectrum with people who have been in their homes for a long period of time, aging, becoming more, more like senior citizens. Can you like just recap those two dynamics that seem to be two of the key findings of the report?
Sure. Jen, do you want to, Jennifer, I'm sorry, do you want to take?
I'm having, I'm actually having a little trouble hearing, Theo, so if you have a ready insert, or else we'll need to repeat it a little bit, yeah.
So the, the question is, sort of, given the current, current market and changing dynamics in the market, both from a cost perspective and demographics, getting pinched as people are trying to enter the housing market and seniors aging in place and staying in, and their houses aging and needing, needing some rehab or refurbishment or capitalization.
I see. Yeah, we tried to strike a balance here between providing new options for people to, you know, for those who, who want to downsize to have the freedom of that choice, that they can downsize but still stay in Wakefield, where they have, you know, their community and their social structure. And then others, of course, will want to stay in their, in their, in their homes and have those homes modified. So we tried to recognize both of those. And then as, you know, as those homes do turn over, just with, you know, the natural process, as well as by creating more units for seniors that would be desirable to downsize, you know, less maintenance, better efficiency, all those things. Some other more family-oriented housing can then kind of open up naturally on the market. So that's how we looked at that, and we tried to provide ideas to really both help seniors age in their homes, because there's certainly a segment of seniors who want that, and then also open up that range of options for people who want to stay in the community, but they really, you know, for one reason or another, whether it's economics, it's, you know, maintenance, it's, you know, all different reasons, people are looking to downsize but stay in that community. So sort of looked at it at both ends, so I'm not sure if that answers exactly your question.
No, I think it does, I just wanted to kind of draw out those two dynamics of the report, because having just come off the campaign trail and talking to people door-to-door, I heard a lot of those concerns expressed, both on the, the younger demographic and the older demographic in Wakefield. So I, I thought the report did an excellent job of capturing those two dynamics that are going on in town.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your comments. And I think the, the thanks really go to Councilor Vincent and Planner Elliott and Jennifer Goldson and company, and, and the entire advisory board. I think one other key aspect of, of the plan is that it gets into, I think, the development constraints and talking about producer price index increases and things like that, that really do show how building costs are going up, and all of those tensions that make it important to be thoughtful about what opportunities are going to be presented to us, when and where, and what may not be available just given high costs. The fact that we have adopted the ADU bylaw is an important example of how you use planning and zoning to help set the table and create opportunities to be thoughtful about our housing stock, about our land, and to help property owners, homeowners, think about how they might respond to changes in opportunities. And that, that same, you know, we're, we're not mandating particular goals or, or housing units be built. What we're talking about is streamlining zoning, streamlining permitting, things like that, that facilitate decision-making when, when and where it's advantageous to do. And so that's why you'll see discussions around some zoning considerations, form-based zoning, or things like that, that get really wonky, but they, they're potential tools to consider that might help current owners, future property owners, think about ways that they can achieve the goals we've set for our 40A MBTA communities, identified areas, things like that. The other two things that really made my planning and housing policy hard grow big is where it talks about the role of the Affordable Housing Trust to help be sort of a monitor of our SHI and help sort of be a keeper of that flame, would also help be along with the planning board and the town council and the, all of our departments, not to lose sight of this, this housing plan and the need to re-up it in five years. But also the, the desire to create some, like a housing roundtable, things like that, to help keep the discussions going and have another way of continuing to facilitate this conversation, not just through town council, town meeting, or the planning board. But that's also just another way for achieving that transparency that, that I think really does, would help.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, something we should think about. I also, I just want to credit this report for coming up with data that we've all like anecdotally heard about. So, you know, when we started Wakefield 101 a couple of years ago, and we started asking people why they moved to Wakefield, and we were hearing about grandparents moving to be closer to their grandchildren and not needing, you know, a bigger house, and we heard, we were watching people move from all over the world, and so language issues. So I think, you know, we don't do any of this work in silos, and I actually think this gives us a good gauge of our community, you know, the percentage of low income, the people living with disability, the people of transportation needs to get into Boston. And so I think there's a lot of information, and I, I know you're wearing your housing hat, this makes your housing heart grow, this makes my, like, you know, services we provide in town heart grow as well. I think there's a lot of information that a lot of different groups can use as we plan for the next five years, so wanted to mention that. Councilor Constance?
I have a quick question about practical next steps. So I noticed that too, that item 24 is having the, the Affordable Housing Trust monitor and, and keep pushing this forward. So is the Housing Advisory Board, the HPP Advisory Board, is that disbanding, or are you guys just kind of moving to a background role, and when it's time to have a roundtable, whoever wants to come to that from the current advisory board will step forward? Or what's your vision for how does the board look on a go-forward now that this excellent work is done?
Yeah, I, I do in fact think that this Housing Production Advisory Committee sunsets. But this is certainly, I think that, because the charter was to, to do this, I, I do think it, it gives us sort of a good stepping stone to think about how that future roundtable could, could be serviced by volunteers, members of the advisory committee, or certainly a lot, a lot of other folks around town. So, yeah. The, it's a useful, I think, next conversation to have for the, the planning board and town council, so.
So Jennifer, would you recommend that we, we don't disband until after we hear from the state that it's been approved?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, because sometimes they do have some comments here and there.
Okay, and do you have?
They get back to us pretty quickly, yeah.
Like how, what's the timeline? That was my next question.
You know, they, they have a lot longer. I think they have something like 90 days after you submit it, after, because we need the letter that says town council and planning board have approved it, and then you send it into the state. And they, I think they technically have 90 days, but they almost always get back to us much faster. You know, it, it depends on how well-staffed they are at the moment, but, but I have had experiences where they've gotten back in four or five weeks. And, and, you know, often they'll approve the whole thing, but sometimes they'll say, hey, on page five, you talked about this, and I think you should add in something about that. They're usually not such substantial changes that they need to go back for a revote, but, but there's something that the, I think the advisory committee, it would be good to keep them together just to review those comments and, and just, you know, decide, is this substantial enough that it needs to go back to planning board or not? And then if it's more of a, like a clerical or clarification, that kind of thing, then I don't think it needs to.
Great. Okay. Madam, just, Steve, anything to add?
No, I, I think I completely agree, I would not disband the advisory board at this point. And I think what you want for a motion to anticipate what you're saying is to authorize the, the town council authorizes the town administrator to present the plan, the Housing Production Plan to EO HLC for state approval.
I, Madam Chair, make a motion that the town council approve the Housing Production Plan as presented, so that the town administrator may move it forward with the state for approval.
Check.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Even unanimous, thank you. And the planning board already approved it.
Yes, yes, that, that's why I'm here and the, the advisory committee as well. And I, I would say the, the members of the committee are really happy to see this through, and I think would certainly be very open to future roles and, and really helping to help the town take the next steps.
And I might also point out that the current chair of the Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust is also, was also the chair of the Housing Production Plan Committee. Gail Seibert, so correct? Yes, Gail Seibert, yes, so she's pretty aware of those roles on this. So exciting on both ends.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jennifer.
And I can say, great job by Jen and her group, by great counsel.
All right.
And I'm just, I was just looking at my calendar, Steve. You'll be able to have that communication before July 3rd?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Sharon's gonna have that tomorrow.
Just, just looking at a calendar, thank you. Okay, thank you, Jen, for, thank you, Theo. Okay, moving on, item 5C, intermunicipal agreement, Director of the Assessing Department.
I can take that if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So the, our agreement is up, this intermunicipal agreement with Reading, Wakefield, and Linfield expires on June 30th for our shared director of the Assessing Department. I think this is an unqualified success for all three communities, all three communities. I've been in contact with both town managers there. They certainly all agree, want to keep going on this. Reading has already signed it. Linfield is actually gonna approve it and sign it tonight. I think Victor has done a fantastic job for all three communities, and just so, you know, we go into these things and we look into, see the And just so, you know, we go into these things and we look into these intermunicipal agreements, we look to how can we provide the same service or hopefully an enhanced service for less money? That's kind of the definition of efficiency. So, you know, Wakefield's share, all-in, including benefits, for the Town Assessor is $88,000. I will tell you, if we had to have our own, salary would be way more than that, and all the Bennys would be on top of that. So it's a great deal for the town, and I recommend approval. Victor hasn't missed a beat. He's available all the time to us and everything, and works very well in all communities. So, that's it.
Tom Muller?
Any questions, Councillor Butler? No, no.
Why is Linfield only on the hook for 20% of his benefits?
Well, if you look at the last page, a little bit less than everything, all added in, I added a little bit on the other end, they have way less assessments. It's a much smaller community.
So they're like, and they're, we're paying like 31%, Reading's paying 36, and he's somebody, the other, doing the math.
I think Reading's paying the same as we are. If you look though.
No, I don't think so. Maybe with the 40, 40, 20, maybe it works out that way, but looked like they were paying more.
Linfield's much smaller and actually per.
Is the expense there, though, of just doing the bills, or is the, is the expense of people fighting their bill?
Both. It's doing the assessment for each, you know, going, each year, assessing all the properties in town, going out to a lot of them during that time, handling abatement applications. You know, he brought, Victor brought the tax relief to our community, and then that spread over to Reading for the, I don't know if Linfield, did Linfield adopt that, Tom, do you remember?
Not sure. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to add that Victor handles a lot of the appellate tax board work himself. It's only rarely that he turns to me to step in, in either Linfield or Wakefield.
Oh, I think it's a phenomenal deal. And like, you know, yeah, I'm not arguing against the deal. I'm voting for this. I just was like, oh, how did we come up with them only paying 20%?
Let's not talk about that too much.
All right.
Councillor Constance?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to renew the intermunicipal agreement among Wakefield, Reading, and Linfield in connection with the Director of the Assessing Department.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Item, I'm losing my numbers here, sorry. 5D2, D, interim Town Administrator.
Not a D2, I don't have one in mind.
Sorry, no, D. So at our last meeting, we voted to make Kevin our interim Town Administrator. Thank you, Kevin. You weren't here, but I think you accepted.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. You had a more important engagement, you were on the search committee that we'll hear about a little later. But we did not talk about compensation for you filling in this role. And so we had asked Steve to kind of come up with a proposal. Steve, do you just want to talk about the proposal?
Yeah, it's in the package, and I don't want to embarrass Kevin, but I try to keep things, you know, within the, and thank you, Kevin, for accepting, I appreciate it, too. I try to keep things pretty easy, if we can. So if you noted, if you note, during the budget process, Kevin's salary was bifurcated. It was going to be, you know, first six months of the year, X, second six months of the year, X-plus. In talking to Kevin, and it's a great deal for the town, I say we just move Kevin to where he would, will be January 1st, 2026, on July 1st, 2025. Basically, no compensation for serving as interim Town Administrator. And it's already, and budget-wise, the cost of the town is less than $150 a week for that move, so make it very easy, just move him to that step. It's kind of getting your step increased six months early, is the way I look at it.
Any questions?
Tom Muller?
So do we have a motion? Do we have to make a motion?
He just did.
Okay, so move.
So move, yeah.
So move to approve the compensation as presented.
Second.
Second, great. All in favor? Say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. You still have to stay, you can't leave. Stay for the meeting.
Thank you, although you could have probably squeezed us for more now.
You're giving away the store today, Doug, really.
We eat like no.
Okay, moving on, Item 6A, easements and right-of-way.
I think that, Tom Muller?
Can I see it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, first, we have a grant of sidewalk easement by the developer of 62 Foundry Street. This is adding to, this is a grant to the town of a sliver of sidewalk on two sides of this property, five feet in width on one side, two feet on the other, so that the town has a good-size, a public way-type sidewalk, and so that the town will maintain the entirety of that sidewalk, both the easement part and the town-owned part, in the same manner. And there's no cost to the town, though we do agree that we will maintain the easement part, again, in the same way that we maintain the rest of it. Since it's a grant to the town, it needs a vote of acceptance by the Town Council, and there's a signature page where we need the signatures of a quorum of the council.
Can I, Tom, may I just ask a question from my learning? Who is it in the town that noticed that the existing planned sidewalk was too narrow, and so therefore the property owner needs to be approached to grant this easement to widen the sidewalk? I'm just curious about process.
I think it happened during the development process between the developers, engineer legal team, and our engineer legal team while they were laying it out. This is not all that unusual in some of those kind of more congested areas.
Thanks. Should we do a motion after discussion, one by one here, or bundle them?
I'd like to take them one at a time, so I'd be looking for a motion to accept the grant of sidewalk easement.
No discussion? Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council approve the sidewalk easement grant to the town as presented by Mr. Muller.
Seconded. Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you. Item A2.
And then the second is a grant of drainage easement, which we are being asked to accept. This is on 39 Grafton Street. Steve, I think we're replacing an existing.
Yeah, I think this was actually done at Town Meeting.
Sewer easement. So Town Meeting has specifically authorized the Town Council to accept this. It's basically a replacement of a sewer easement over a property at 39 Grafton Street. The old easement is being abandoned, and this easement is being accepted. So I'd be looking for a motion to accept the grant of drainage easement for 39 Grafton.
Tom Muller?
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you. And Item 3, right-of-way alteration.
And finally, the, this is an order of right-of-way layout alteration for Farm Street, and it relates to the reorientation of Farm Street and Hemlock Road that was authorized by Town Meeting. So I'd be looking for a vote authorizing the order of right-of-way layout for altering Farm Street.
Tom Muller?
Second.
Second, great. And just to confirm, this was already approved at Town Meeting?
It was.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
This is the town circle of the new high school?
Basically.
Okay.
Allows that to happen.
This is a presentation that Bill Rano provided a couple meetings ago.
Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same easily.
The last one is?
The last one, on Farm Street.
Yeah.
Great. All in favor? Say aye, great. 5-0, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Item 6B, American Rescue Plan Act reports.
Thank you very much. I have a very quick and brief PowerPoint to talk about the ARPA plan and where the money has gone. As the Town Council will recall, in the second round of the ARPA designation, the town received a little over $8 million. 2.8 million was to the town. The other amount was from the county, because Middlesex County is not really an active county, so each town municipality in the county got the county money. It kind of worked out well for us in that regard. So the council made, and this is in your package, so please stop me if I'm going too quick, the council made a number of votes over the years on how to allocate the money, you know, and some of them were changed. And remember that the money needs to either be completely spent, has to be completely spent by 12/31/26. It can be encumbered or under contract until then. So not, you're gonna see that not all of the money is spent in every area, but it will be by that time. Energy Assistance Fund, spent $198,000, and that money was reallocated by the Town Council. Lake Corner Power Cleanup and Vets Field Realignment and the bathroom down there, a little bit is spent there. The bathroom will be built this fall. I actually have a sketch in it later on in the package. And more work will be done over there. It'll all be done by 12/31/26 to really help run off to the lake and all that stuff going on. Lake Pathways was reallocated. Rail Trail Mobility, this is that and the area down near Water Street. There will be, I believe, in September, a 25% design hearing for that area in conjunction with the Invision Wakefield Project as well. But we continue to move down the rail trail, the, I think you've seen some work being done at the Water Street and the New Salem Street crossings to make those safer. I think there'll be a ribbon cutting, so to speak, sometime late summer, early fall, maybe September. So that'll be exciting when that does happen. Tree replacement, a lot of money's been spent on tree replacement. There's another $26,000 under contract right now, and these are public shade trees all over town, and I have a couple of pictures of them in the slides as well. Sidewalk expansion, a lot of that has been spent as well. You're seeing a lot of sidewalks going on all over town, being cut in Prospect Street, being a main one, going down to the train station, and that was quite an involved, lengthy process. And there is a list in here as well. I haven't been down to Oak and, Oak and the Hunt, is it Oak and the Hunt? Oak and, Oak and Green. I know that work is being done there, or started to be done there, or, that's another big area being done. I haven't seen it myself. WCAT, we did help them, and then reallocated a little bit. Water Truck Conference Room, ADA Swing, there'll be a picture of that in here. Civil War Monument Evaluation, we did, we allocate some of that. We did some title searches on tax title property. We have a book of title searches, if anybody wants to read it. I think I gave them to the Conservation Commission, so if you really like to look through titles like I used to do in my old job, feel free. Inspire Cafe, we helped out Inspire Cafe, and what a great job by the council to do that. If you haven't been there, public, please go to the Inspire Cafe, because it is fabulous. Small Business Fund, the Economic Development Committee is working hard on this, and although only 38 has, 38,000 and some change has been expended, and these are expended numbers, numbers that the town has actually paid out, there are $481,000 worth of pending facade requests that you're gonna see coming forward that are, that are, these are all approved, representing $985,000 worth of improvements in our business community downtown in Greenwood. And that's gonna be, really gonna show uplift, facelift everywhere, so it's a great program. My favorite, the Senior Center renovations, and we'll show you some great pictures of that coming up. Again, more money went into sidewalk extensions, we're not with another contract, at least more of that going on this fall. The Affordable Housing Trust, it has spent $58,000 of the $200,000 granted to it in the RAP program, talked about in our Housing Production Plan earlier today. And in my report, they'll be through May, March 31st, that you have in your packet as well, I think it was 24,000 or 25,000 that had been spent. It's been, it's up to 58 now, so more applications are coming in. As you see these units come online, these rental units at, all over town, but some of the new affordable rental units, we're having people coming in and helping them get into there. So it's really a great program. I have another application today, Kevin, for you, just dropped off. Kevin's been handling those in the interim. The Lakeside Beacon, a lot of work has been done there. You can see it from both sides of the lake, and I'll show you a picture of that. That's been almost all expended at this point. The Galvin Solar should be up and running. They had some electrical work left to do, but that is gonna start powering the Galvin School, and hopefully, and sometimes maybe returning some power to the grid, but I'll show you pictures of what's on the roof. And the Westwood School and Roof Chimney is actually completed. So as of today, 73% of the money has gone out the door from the town. The rest is under contract, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that we'll be all set.
Where's the Westwood School?
The Westwood School is the Little Red Schoolhouse, Wakefield Museum. All right? So here is the roof, the roof that was done on that, council money, the new chimney. So if you, if you went and saw the Wakefield Museum at all, it was open during the rededication. Really a great space, and we were a little bit worried, as they would be, that, you know, there could be leakage and what have you, but a little bit money, it actually probably cost a little bit more, but we did have some DPW money to finish that out. The Beacon Street Swale, remember, there was a big drainage problem down there. If you ever walked down there after rain, it was a mud puddle. That's been pretty much taken care of, helping with runoff into the lake, and this part of the drainage for that, that was there. And plantings are all around. This was before the plantings went in. My understanding is that the plantings are in, so it really looks quite nice down there. So I'd say to take a, take a trip down there, take a look at it. You can see it from across from your house, you can see the berm.
Yeah, I saw, like, I saw the guys working there. I was wondering, what's going on there?
Prospect Street Sidewalk, which included building some retaining walls as well, that is really gonna help people on that entire side of the street. I mean, I grew up in town, Tommy, Tommy grew up in, there was never a sidewalk going up that side of Prospect Street, ever, so that's nice to help people get down to the train station, Farmers Market, what have you, on that side of the street. This, I apologize for this, it's very hard to read on the slideshow, but it's kind of a schedule that Oak is gonna be looked at for sidewalks, Oak and Old Nahant, Prospect that we said, and Parker. So there's gonna be a lot of sidewalk work done all this summer as well. We talked about the rail-to-trail alignment, work is out on Water Street doing that. The Vet Field Bathroom, we actually had to go out to bid a second time because the first bids came in way too high for the project. So that is going to be delivered this fall. It is a kind of a prefab building, which will be easier for us to put up and take less time, probably delivered after the Farmers Market is over, so they won't have any, you know, you know, discombobulation right now. My favorite is the Senior Center. It really came up fabulous. Some of us were there in the grand opening, but it's a great place for our seniors. This is the room upstairs that they've already had musical events and some other events up there for the seniors, and it really is just a great, great venue. Some of the areas for, you know, seniors to play cards. I love this room right here, I think it looks great, including the windows, but I think it really is fabulous, and talk about a group of our citizens who are so happy and so pleased and so thrilled. And Karen Burke, our Senior Senate Director, is really thinking about what new activities now, so I think next year, when she comes in, she's gonna want a bigger budget to give some of those activities to our seniors, but really a great space. Hopefully, we have an earmark in with the, with the state delegation to get some air conditioning for those second to the second and third floors, hopefully that'll come through, that'll really help out. Galvin Roof, Galvin is almost completely solar in. Galvin Roof, Galvin is almost completely solar in. I, for one, did not really see that it was gonna be that expansive in the panels, but it really almost covers the whole roof. So it really is gonna be great for not only the climate in the area, but will really help a little bit with the electrical bills for the school. And remember that the high school will be net zero, and the voc will be net zero, and will actually feed energy back to the energy park across the street, and that's gonna be a great story that, that will sell back to the grid.
Do you have to know the size of the array that they put on the galvin?
I don't off the top of my head, I mean, I could look it up.
Okay.
I think that was in the town meeting materials when it was approved.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can look it up for you. Tree plantings, I think this is on Walton, I believe. Dennis is hitting areas all over towns and all over town, and this is really putting a lot of money helping with that tree canopy in every neighborhood, and having trees in your neighborhood really helps with the effects of climate and actually can cool neighborhood. They say 10 degrees, I don't know if that helped today, but they say that's quite a thing. The Accessible Swing, there's gonna, there's one here at Doll Bear, there's another one going at another one of our parks, but really makes people very happy and really helping some, some kids that have, you know, some mobility challenges. Facade and Side Program, there's a couple that are here, it's Harrington's, Boss Mamas, which, you know, you know, dovetailed all from fangs that went out, really some great projects, and then you look downtown, you're already seeing some things going downtown now, some repairs going on down there.
What percentage do we cover?
Up to 50.
We're gonna do up to 50, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I said, that 481,000 that's been approved is like almost a million dollars worth of investment in the downtown area, so really, really good stuff. And we also, there, there's also a market assessment. We're looking for really some information, how to shape the future of downtown Wakefield, and, you know, doing surveys, an actual survey that's gonna go on to help us go in that area. And the banners downtown, which have been, which were really great when we first got them, they need some refreshing. Of course, the ones with the veterans on it go up before Memorial Day, they stay on through the 4th of July, but shortly after the 4th of July, we're gonna see some new, excuse me, seasonal banners down there that really are gonna pop and make the, and really I think show the downtown in some great lights. And that also is, EDC, through their grant, gave some money for that. So that's real quick, showing all the good stuff that's going on. I think it's fun to see what actually comes to fruition. So hopefully I can answer any questions that you may have, or town council has.
Councilor Constance?
Where, when, when you reallocate, when the council reallocates, where does that money land, in departments or boards?
No, though, when the council reallocated, that went to different projects. So, for instance, the Energy Assistance was at 400,000, and then we spent 198 and some change, and then the council reallocated a portion of that, and I forget where it went, might've gone to the EDC or to the Senior Center or wherever. So those were council decisions, it wasn't, you know, departments didn't do it, administration didn't do it, council, the council decided, because the council had control over that money, where to move it.
Right, no, there's, like, lake pathways, there's, you know, $90,000 somewhere, I'm just wondering.
Right, that, we, some of that went to the Beacon Street area and stayed, then some of that, I think, actually went to the solar at the Galvin, if I recall. So it could be reallocated anywhere where the council's wanted. But that was, I think that was then, so it had to be, everything had to be allocated or under contract or under MOU by a certain date, and that date has passed. So, for instance, the Economic Development Council, they have money that, a million dollars, they put into different buckets. I would say they, under the MOU that they signed with the town council, and they have to give that quarterly report on, they, within their purview, could say, all right, we wanna do more in the facade program, or we wanna do pop-ups, which they have to. They can reallocate within their bucket, but the town council, I think, would, we would be subject to a clawback at that point because we needed to disperse it at some point. Yeah, there were a lot of discussions at town council, going, where to move this, where to move that.
No, we were, we were involved.
Yeah, oh yeah, everything was through the town council.
So we had come up with priorities and kind of did a first round, and then some things like the bike, the pathway around, it just wasn't feasible, so we had extra money, so then we reallocated it, yeah. But we decided of where else it would go. Some projects came about later, and so we said, oh, okay, let's do that. It didn't make the first round, but it made the second round.
And I think that's why.
But all of it's been allocated, and like Stu said, the Economic Development Committee, we did an MOU with them, so they have that million dollars.
That's why you might see different days on this, different dates.
Right.
Town council approvals, when they initially was, and then when it happened again.
They have to spend by the end of this year or not?
26.
26.
December 31st, 2026.
Steve, for the bathrooms at Vet Field, if the bids were high, why do, how do, how they get cheaper next?
I think we just got a different, I think it's the same, it's still two bathrooms, it's just a little different construction. I think they didn't understand the project, what the engineering told me.
So we think we'll get cheaper bids?
No, no, we went out, we got the bid. It's done.
Oh.
It's coming, it's done. We would have to go out again because it was too high. We got them already in and came in on the budget.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and that'll be in the fall. That'll be coming in in the fall.
Okay, any other questions about the ARPA funds? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on with ARPA funds, on the memorandums of understanding that the town council signed with really the two committees, one is the Economic Development Committee and one is the Affordable Housing Trust. Each quarter, in the memorandum of understanding, or after each quarter, the committee needs to come back to the council and say, hey, here's what we've spent the money on, and here's our report. So the second item in the agenda on ARPA funds is the Affordable Housing Trust Report. So that shows that through May, excuse me, I keep saying May, through March 31st, through the RAP program, the Affordable Housing Program, they had expended, the housing trust had expended $24,700, $271, okay? That was through March, through March 31st. Through about, I think, June 15th, when I put this together, they had already jumped that up to that $58,000, so we got a lot more people coming in as news of the program got out. I mean, you have people that are moving into, it could be Autobahn Road, it could be Hopkins Street, 40B projects, it could, it doesn't, you know, they have to be affordable, people have to meet the guidelines, so we actually, they have to give tax returns and what have you. It's only for Wakefield properties too. Then a few people ask, well, I'm moving to, you know, I'm moving to Saugus, well, please call town of Saugus, we're not gonna help you move there. Well, that's not fair. I said, I can't tell you it's fair, life isn't fair. So they have to go through a program that the town planner was handling. Now it's kind of a combination of myself and Kevin and Jack in his office that are handling it, but you can see how that's ratcheted up. And I think, and what I'm, and what's happening, when more of these affordable rental units come on, for instance, the head of the lake, the basin, those are gonna come on in August, the first group, so those that are affordable, you're in there for, well, what's affordable today, $2,900 a month is affordable, but there will be people that will apply through this program and help them out. It's up to $5,000, and they can get, you know, first month's rent if they need, last month's rent, kind of things, stuff that people will come in with. So the housing trust is very pleased with that. They are looking into expanding that into an ownership program that you can help people with soft second mortgages that are actually buying affordable units, so that may be down the pike, but, so that's what they're using the money for. It's really been very, very popular, and people are very happy, very nervous and very happy once they get it, because it makes a big difference in their life, so it's a good program.
In a sense, so that's not sustainable, there's no...
No, no, it's not sustainable at this point, but the housing trust does have a million dollars in it of town, of money that was returned to the town from 40B projects that were ownership that, at the time, when they resold, they couldn't find anybody, so it came out of our affordable inventory. I don't think we've had one since 2015 or 16 or so.
No, we had one recently.
Well, recently, okay. One, right.
How does that work?
So if you're, if you bought an affordable unit, and let's say you got it for $200,000, okay, under the affordable price, you went to sell, you could not get another affordable buyer. You can then sell on the open market, but you, as the person who got, the owner who got, took advantage of the affordable component to get in, you don't get that windfall. You get a little, you get the appreciation, the inflation part of that, but the rest of that windfall comes back to the town to be used for housing projects. So over the years, this, these add up, and maybe it's 80,000 here, 60,000 here, so we have close to a million dollars now, that the housing trust is talking about what to do to use that money. They may use it as seed money on a project, so that's what they're talking about, you know, things they'll probably dovetail, I would think, with housing production plans. So that's a nice, you know, area that they have there.
So John, that part's sustainable, it's just this ARPA piece.
Right.
Once we, they burn through that, that's gone, but the rest of, you know, there's other sources.
So they may decide to keep 100,000 and keep doing that, and maybe look for other areas of sustainability afterwards.
We, when we get the money and they sell it at the market rate, we lose that as a unit.
We lose that unit off our list, yeah. So that, and I tell you, it hasn't, I mean, Kevin said one happened a little while ago. They don't happen that often now because they're great, they're great units for people. I mean, the Renly Building, which is the Foundry Street one, we just did the sidewalk easement for on Foundry Street, that, those condos are going market price around a million dollars. The affordables are around 290, so you are ostensibly, you're living in a, next door to a million dollar unit, getting started.
I wonder how many applications they got for those units.
Tons, tons.
Yeah.
Tons, yeah. At, I think there's 73 affordable rental units at the basin, and they got well over 200 applications. Kind of shows you the need for affordable housing, so. So if there are any further questions on the housing one, I would like a motion to accept it. That's okay if you have a change of motion.
Second. Great, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item C, WCAT update.
I think Kevin's gonna give you that one.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Real, real quick, the, the update on the MOU for WCAT. Currently, we have two draft MOUs, one that was drafted by Steve and one that was drafted by WCAT. We're looking to see if the town council will appoint a liaison to help work to merge those two documents together, so we can bring one final document back to the town council for their approval.
And you may recall, we kind of went through the report of the WCAT advisor group that both Kevin and I were on, so Kevin's up to date of all this. My draft has, basically, everything was in that report. There's a few more things that they added, so we want to talk about that a little bit, but they're close. So I would like to have a liaison from town council, because the agreement would be with the WCAT Board of Directors, which we're not part of. And you can think about it, we don't need it, you can assign anybody you want later.
Okay.
You don't have to do it today.
And you think it should be a member of the town council and not the interim town administrator?
No, I think it should be a member of the town council, working with the interim town administrator.
Okay. Is anyone interested in the position? Councilor Chrisley.
That was easy.
There we go, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
No, you can just point.
Liaison, great, okay. John, Kevin, Kevin, John, great.
We know each other.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Perfect, okay. Item seven, Appointment of Youth Counsel. We have, I'm the liaison, so I'm, we have a recommendation from Liz Persons, who's the staff person, and, and I think Ali worked on this too. We usually defer to the youth council's recommendations that they send to us. We also encourage everyone that isn't chosen for the youth council to attend the meetings, you're just not a voting member, but we want you to participate if you want to, that would be really great. Also want to just thank Liz, who took on the youth council when she started, and she's been doing a great job. And also just want to recognize Ali Attue, who's been, I think, a youth council member since he was in middle school, so is one of our, one of the first who kind of did it all the way through, and is graduated and off to college, and we just want to thank him for all the work that he did on the youth council. And with that, do I have a recommendation, a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the membership of the youth council of the names highlighted in, in Liz's email to us in the, as presented in the materials.
Do you mind reading the names?
Sure. The names are Emily Alof, Nathaniel Chines, Parker Hamlin, Nico Moody, Madeline Naper, Sophia Panagetti, Ellie Pritchard, and Olivia Wall.
Do I have a second?
I'll second her. Ellie, Ellie happens to be my neighbor.
Oh, and I will just say he is off to Tussie University, which, according to Jonathan, myself, and Dr. Mayo, is the best university.
For people that couldn't get into JUSS.
Motion and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Say aye, great, unanimous, thank you so much, and thank you to the youth council that will start meeting again in the fall. Item eight, warrants. Councilor Carney.
There's nothing specific. I talked to Kevin earlier, regular payments, nothing stands up.
Great. Item nine, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the minutes of June 9th, 2025, as presented in the materials, be approved.
Second.
Great, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you. Item 10, announcements. Kevin, can I start with you to talk about the search committee?
Update on the search committee, I talked to John Petrin today, and I wanted to let everyone know that the job posting closed today. The search room will be forwarding the resumes to the screening committee by Thursday, along with the public surveys that were submitted. The screening committee had their first meeting on June 9th. At that meeting, we discussed the purpose of the committee, the open meeting law, the municipal market for this position, the process we're gonna handle for the interviews, and also we set a meeting schedule. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd. At that meeting, we're gonna select a chair and a secretary. After that, we are gonna go into executive session, where we'll review the applicants and select the individuals that we're looking to interview. Our interview schedules is for July 21st and 22nd. At the end of the meeting on the 22nd, we are gonna pick the finalists on who we're gonna send forward. The search committee will take those finalists, and they will do a reference and background check, and then submit a report to the town council. And talking with John Petrin, the, he's looking to do the town council interviews August 12th and August 14th, to stay on schedule. If that's okay with the town council.
Yeah, that sounds like a great timeline.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, and I, we haven't said it out loud at a town council meeting, and I just want to say it out loud. Kevin, you did not apply to be the town administrator.
I did not apply.
You missed the 5:00 PM deadline.
I missed the deadline, but also by being on the search committee, that precluded me from applying, so.
We appointed, we appointed you not asking that question on town council, so just wanted to say that out loud, thank you. So our hope is at the next, at our next town council meeting, we would get updated again by whoever is chosen as the chair of the search committee. We also do have those survey results that we said, they put together great survey results, but our agenda was packed today, so we will talk about those at our next meeting. Does that timeline work for everyone? Any other questions?
Just, I'm, what can they say to us? Supposed to be incompetent.
What can who say to us?
The chair of the committee. The chair of the committee.
I think just how the timeline, if things are running on track, that's it, yeah. And we might not even need that, but just, just of the, that's a pretty ambitious timeline, so if something's running, not, then, yeah, maybe we don't need an update.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, no, it wouldn't be about, it would just be like, it's working, you know? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's true. And maybe it would be John updating us, everything's on track. I just want to know that things are moving along. Did you have any hand raised?
Yeah.
Councilor Butler?
Do we have a number, like, did he give you a number of people who had submitted?
He said, I think, at the end of last week, he was at 20.
That's a good number. So I think those are things, like, I'd like to know, like, numbers versus people.
Without names, yeah. And just if it's moving along, I think summer's kind of a hard time to schedule interviews, so I do think it's an ambitious timeline, but hopefully everything will be on track. But thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other announcements. Councilor Chrisley?
I just wanted to mention, I had a really, I got a very generous tour from Karen Burke at the senior center. I can confirm Steve's great photos of the renovation work over there. She gave me the lowdown on how much renovation work they had done and all the cleaning out they had done before the construction, and she was very complimentary about the quality of the work and the willingness of public works to pitch in. So it's great to see that happening at the senior center.
Thank you. Councilor Patson?
I want to have two things. One, I wanted to congratulate the Human Rights Commission for having a great Juneteenth celebration. They had a really joyful celebration in town, and it was well attended, and that was great to see. And I wanted to mention, we've talked about the ARPA funds, the Economic Development Council just opened its grant program for arts and creative grant making in town, for really anybody in town who's got an idea for a project or an event that will forward an artistic or creative endeavor that will also be of benefit to Wakefield citizens and move economic development forward. So that grant process just opened up. It's on the website. Jen McDonald's going to do some nice posters for us, but in the meantime, it just opened today. So right now, if you're interested in that program and getting a grant for this really exciting initiative, go on the town website and you'll see it under the Economic Development Council subtab.
Thank you. Councilor Butler?
I know, odd to say, really, this is a survey pre-announcement. I saw that registration opened for Porch Fest, which is going to be held on September 6th this year. Last year it was a big success, there were 100 acts at over 50 venues. My wife and I hosted three bands last year. It was a phenomenal community event. Probably 80% of the people who stopped by our house, I didn't know. It was great to get away, to meet your neighbors. It's walkable, it's, it's very family friendly, but it's also just a really enjoyable time. So if you're looking to host, you know, I think they have Facebook site, Wakefield Porch Fest, they have Instagram, wakefieldporchfest.com, they've taken out all the things. So if you can host, or if you're a band who's interested in this, please go on the website and register.
What's the date?
Oh, it's September 6th.
Thank you. Any updates? I just have a couple, thinking all, continuing on great events in town. The parade and Fourth of July is coming up in 11 days. The day, there's so many great volunteers who work on all day, so there's children's activities in the morning, there's fireworks at night, and in the middle is the parade, starts at 5:00 PM. I've heard it's going to be bigger and better than ever, so please try to participate in any or all of the activities on July 4th. Also, just a reminder, we have a special election tomorrow. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Voting is at the Galvin Middle School. It is to fill the empty chair that we have here, so please make a plan to vote tomorrow. And there's no school, so parking should be very easy for those that need to know that. And then just one more thing, we were talking about it earlier, you have probably gotten an email or a robocall that the town is updating their code alert? Is that what we're calling them?
Yeah, it's the emergency alert system.
So it is not a prank call, it is not a hacked call or email. Please follow the instructions and update, so you get notices about things that, emergencies that happen in town, correct?
You actually have to re-register with the new company. Yeah. And we went with the new company for a couple of reasons. Number one, it was cheaper, which is always good, offered a better service, which is even better, and many more languages that you can choose from, or it was a little bit tougher with the old company, so it's really a good deal.
I might want to add, before you get the winter alerts for parking too.
Yeah, it's parking.
Right.
It becomes important to have that.
Yeah. So it is, it is a good tool that we use in the town to let you know about emergencies, parking restrictions, so please sign up so you get those. I did it earlier today after I got the phone call, so that's really helpful. Okay, and then I'm going to take chair prerogative for one more. This is Steve's last meeting as our town administrator after 17 years, and I want to thank you for all that you've done. I know Councilor Carney threw a great bash for you last month, and we don't want to embarrass you too much, but I do want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the last nine years. And so I think the ARPA presentation showed a little tidbit of all the great work that you have helped us do in this town, and there's been a lot more accomplishments. So I just want to say that. And if anyone wants to add anything.
Thank you.
Tom?
Wait till the MOU's signed, John.
Yes.
Might not be included.
Madam Chair, I've worked with over a dozen town administrators in several communities. Some are good at budgeting, others at planning, still others at personnel. Some are people persons, and others are best dealt with by memo. Steve is a unique amalgam of everything that a town council or a town council could want in a town administrator. I'd say he must have been designed by a committee, but that doesn't sound very flattering. His objective accomplishments are all around us. We're so used to them, we tend to forget that they didn't just happen. You don't get the best bond rating or avoid two and a half overrides by accident. You don't become one of the first towns to join the GIC and save huge sums of money on health insurance, or become one of the most successful towns in funding your retirees, or settle all your collective bargaining agreements within budget by waiting for good things to happen. We satisfied the MBTA Communities Act because of Steve largely, in a way that won't invite overdevelopment. And also because of him, we settled a potentially disastrous environmental lawsuit on Butler Ave in a way that might actually make us money. I've had a number of clients who were highly effective people. I must admit, I generally dread talking to them. A good many of them are aggressive, abrasive, egotistical jerks. But one of the genuine pleasures of my life for the last 17 years has been the daily phone call from Steve, with a sense of humor, a respect for everyone he works with, and a certainty that there's no such thing as an insoluble problem. He reminds me why I, and all of us, do what we do. Steve, no one deserves retirement more than you do, but I regret this day had to come. Best of luck in the future, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I came close.
I think we might just end it on that note. That was lovely. Thank you. Any matters not anticipated for the agenda? No? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Great. All in favor? Aye, and we are adjourned until our next regular town council meeting on Monday, July 14th, 2025. Thank you all.